So next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you're present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maurey.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you, Melody. Appreciate that. So at this time, I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, August 25th, 2020, 6:30 PM. If you would please rise with me and we'll do the pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing shortly after for a moment of silence. Thank you, Nick, for the screen. We'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. At this time, I'd like to move to the adoption of the agenda. I understand that there may be a request for a change in the agenda. I'll defer over to the town manager for that, if you would. Jeff, what is yours?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. We have received a request from Broad Street Homes to defer the rezoning request decision for a month. And as Charlie and I discussed earlier today, your procedure on how to accomplish this would be to make a motion to move the decision to their requested time of September 22nd, which would be the second Board of Commissioners' meeting in September. And then, of course, you would need a roll call vote for that, and then you would need to make a motion to approve the amended agenda with a roll call vote, if you wish to accept the request to defer this decision until September 22nd. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So at this time, it looks like we're looking for a motion to defer this until the September 22nd meeting of the VOC. Any discussion? Any motion, please?
I make a motion to defer.
Very good. Any discussion, please? Very good. Roll call vote, if you would. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maurey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Very good. So this meeting, this agenda item will be moved to the 22nd of September. And at this time as well, I'd like to have a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I make a motion. We accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, roll call vote, please. Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Maurey?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The agenda is approved as amended, so thank you for that. Moving down to the consent agenda. Are there any requested changes to the consent agenda, or do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as approved, as published?
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as published.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote again, please. Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maurey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. And we're not going to jump down to recognitions. And this is, I think we have Deana coming up on this. Deana, are you on? There she's coming on.
Hello.
There you are. Welcome. So at this time, I'm going to give this over to you, and you can do the information on it, if you would, please. What is yours?
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. All right, we're gonna, I'm giving you some information on two awesome Eagle Scout projects that just got finished. There we go. Oh, there we are. We're gonna start off with Christian. He did a informational board at Henry Ness, at Nesbit Park, is near the cul-de-sac area. So it's a great, huge board that we have Plexiglas on, so you can have information on both sides. This will be helping out with athletics and then activities are happening at Nesbit Park and for the park system itself. So wanted to give a great shout out to Christian, a great young man. Definitely, this is, the Eagle Scout process is a wonderful way to help them grow and to become young adults, and I'm very glad that we were a part of his journey on this, so hoping to congratulate Mr. Christian on his path hood to becoming a young adult, and he did a great job with this Eagle Scout project. Then we also have, we have Eli. He is also another 120 troop member that finished up his Eagle Scout project. He created six bat houses that are along the 12 Mile Creek closer to Prescott. And so this is a wonderful eco project to help us with mosquitoes, especially around the creek area. And they, he did a great job with his team, with his scout troop. They installed them about a month ago, and you could always, you can now tell a difference. It really does help out with the environment. So we like to thank Mr. Eli for his contribution and his also going into young adulthood. So wonderful ways the town can be, help young men on their path, especially through Eagle Scout projects. And we have several more Eagle Scout projects in the works, so hopefully in the next couple of months, you'll see two more coming through. And this is then to congratulate them on their accomplishments.
Outstanding. We will give the commiser- the tutorial clapping of the hands, but are they able to be online with us tonight?
No, unfortunately, because of their school schedule, they weren't able to join us tonight, but when we are all together again, I would love to bring all of our Eagle Scout projects scouts to a meeting. By then, we'd probably have about five or six, you know, from last spring to now. So it would be an awesome sight to have all the young men together for photo op.
I think that's a great idea, Deana. Thank you for that, and make sure that we don't forget that, too, because we've had a few of these recognitions, but not being able to go live makes it a little bit different, so we'd love to bring them all together again, so put that on a calendar somewhere when we can all gather.
Yeah, I know that they're excited about that, and as me as well.
Great. Well, congratulations to them, and Deana, thank you for helping them with that project. That's been great. Okay, move down to the next item for recognition. I'm going to pass this one back to our town manager, Jeffrey Wells. Jeff, what was in your court again?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, and I will wait for the other presentation to disappear. And then we will make another short slideshow appear. So as I've told Melody several times now, that there's no better honor than getting recognized by your peers. And her peers have entrusted her with representing their organization, the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks, as their president for the next year. And so we just want to take a minute to say from the town how proud we are of her for this accomplishment. She's been in this business now for a good, a good long while, and the clerks association, I can't tell you I know how many members there are in it. I'm sure there's probably hundreds, if not thousands. There are over 600 municipalities in the state of North Carolina. There are 100 counties, and almost every one of them has a clerk. So this is a big honor, and it is a big privilege and big undertaking. She has a lot of responsibilities in this role for the, for the next year, and these are a couple of pictures shared from that event, and her getting sworn in as the president by our mayor, and then also her speaking. And lastly, a nice picture of all of us that were at the event there together. And have I mentioned how proud I am of her? But I also want to, I also want to surprise her a little bit, and I cannot take credit for the idea for the gift, but I can take credit for going and getting the gift, but what I have here, and I might not be able to do it very well, but it is an envelope that I went to pick up. The idea was, well, we know how stressful it can be for local government employees sometimes, and so what better way to de-stress than to go to a spa? So what we pitched in for was for a 90-minute session at Massage Envy. You can, of course, use this at the Waxall location or any other location of your choice. So I know all about massages. I know all about manicures and pedicures now, and I know about facial scrubs and facial masks and other things like that, that I never knew anything about until I learned more about it a few days ago. But you have 90 minutes to be able to choose whatever services that you would like, at whatever time or place that you would like to do that. So, and this is just our gift to you and to show how proud we are of you and how much we appreciate everything you do, representing the town as our town clerk. So thank you very much. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
That's great, Melody. I mean, you put us on the map again, and thank you for allowing all of us to be a part of that day. So we're looking forward to watching you grow in that role as well as you have here, so congratulations again.
Absolutely, and I would really like to thank all the support that the board and town manager and also our department heads, town staff, everyone's been really great. It was really impressive. I got some feedback from the clerks, and they were all very impressed about the support that I had from the board. Not all clerks have that, so really, really appreciate all the overwhelming encouragement and support from all of you. It really means a lot.
Any comments from anybody else aboard?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Great job, Melody. Look forward to good things. All right, with that, we'll celebrate that probably the rest of the night as well, so that's good, but there are no presentations tonight, no public hearings tonight. We'll move to the item G old business, and that's the annexation of the town property at 4220 Waxall Marvin Road, and which is contiguous to the existing municipal boundaries. Town manager Wells, I'm going to give this one back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to quickly go back through the, this presentation, just hitting the high points. It's a 17.4 acre property that the town just purchased back earlier this summer in June of 2020. It is a doughnut hole property, meaning that it is completely surrounded by the town limits, and it is owned by the town, as I mentioned. This gives you a little bit better depiction of the doughnut hole there with our surrounding zoning to the north, south, east, and west. The Board of Commissioners adopted the resolution of intent at their July 28th meeting. We had the public hearing, of course, two weeks ago on August 11th. We will have to subsequently assign a zoning district, which will, would take up if the board does approve the annexation. That'll come up in September, and your staff recommendation is to approve the annexation ordinance at this meeting. So your options would be to approve ordinance number 2020-014 to extend the corporate limits of the town of Waxall, or deny ordinance number 2020-014 to extend the corporate limits of the town of Waxall. And I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for the town manager on this one? I don't see any hands right now, so right now, we're gonna look for a motion on this. Do I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance number 2020-014 to extend the corporate limits of the town of Waxall.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? I'm gonna have to make my screen a little bit smaller so I can see all of you. There you go. All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please, for the motion to adopt. Commissioner Maurey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McMillan?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Motion passed unanimously. We'll now skip down to item number three. And again, I'm going to turn this one over. It's a decision on the Waxall Ventures LLC conditional district rezoning. Petition CD 009145-2019. I'm gonna pass this back over to the town manager. Jeffrey, yours again?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening once again. So I will not go through the entire presentation again, but I will intend to hit on some highlights. And then our engineering team of Matt Hubert, our town engineer, as well as our consulting traffic engineer, Brady Finkley will be available to ask questions, as well as the developer slash applicant. So where I wanted to start is just a reminder of what the request is to rezone from R2 single-family residential and conditional use, R2 single-family residential, to conditional district, R4 PRD, or planned residential development. And the request is on approximately 212 acres located off of Rehoboth Road and Waxall Crossing Drive. The proposed use is for single-family detached residential development containing 488 lots. So I will fast forward to the master plan and go over that again, and just to get your bearings with everybody that's viewing. As you can follow my cursor, Rehoboth Road is the north-south minor thoroughfare that the proposed development borders to the west. Down here to the south, the east-west minor thoroughfare is Sims Road. That's where the existing entrance is to the existing portion that, that is the Phase 1 of Preserve, and this is the dead end right here of the existing development of the Preserve. If this were to be approved, that road would be continued and ultimately tie back out to the northern frontage that it has there off of Rehoboth Road. So what you see here is a very good depiction of our planned residential development requirements. That's a fancy way of calling it a cluster development. And so what that means is, is you take the density that you would otherwise get from a conventional subdivision, in this case, the R4, and you get the same amount of density from that request, but you're able to do that on smaller lot sizes. And the reason behind that is, is to be able to allow for more dedication of open space for homeowners association or other, or other public type ownership, so that that area is preserved into the future. If you let it be as a conventional, as you call it, subdivision, where the developer would build out the entire development and could basically put every piece of that into a lot, you wouldn't necessarily get the guarantee that there would be a area of open space that's protected by an HOA or some other type of, of public means. So connectivity-wise, as I mentioned before, we're very proud of how this development does meet our connectivity ordinance requirements and how many points of connection it would have to finish out the, the dead-end drive out here to Rehoboth Road, as well as the other connectivity point in their Phase 5 to Rehoboth Road here on the western side. They would be connecting into the existing dead-end streets that when you travel up through the development now that are in place. And they would also stub out to pieces of property that if they ever were to develop, to develop, doesn't mean that they ever would, but if they do, there's an opportunity to, to have that street network tied in there to continue to disperse that traffic throughout the the development area. So the beige represents the 60-foot wide lots within the development. That's 301 lots. The yellow represents 182 lots. And those are 52-foot long lots or foot-wide lots, and then there are also on the western side here, six estate lots that would be proposed in the Phase 5 of the subdivision. And here is the phasing again, just to go over that. It is proposed to be in five phases. The first phase is the northern part of the subdivision. Basically, when you get to the dead-end street, it would be developed through to Rehoboth Drive, as well as portions of it to the east. Then Phase 2 would be the easternmost section of the proposed rezoning area. Phase 3 would then come back here and be directly west of the existing portion of Waxall Crossing Drive, with Phase 4 in the southwest corner, and then Phase 5 to finish up in the westerly area of the proposed development. So, and again, these are just some of the representations from their partner, Lennar, as to what the houses would look like, and of course, this is one of the proposed conditions that we will review again here in just a couple of minutes. These are the different housing plans that they plan to have available on this property. So the future land use plan. So this area, as we talked about last time, is what is called our controlled growth sector. So the permitted density in the entire controlled growth sector is 2.3 acres. So the key language here is if and when more intense growth sectors are developed, and if and when urban services are extended to the site in a matter similar to those described in the G3 sectors to include greater roadway network density and incorporation within utility service areas, permitted densities associated with the G3 residential designation may be achieved. So with the sewer pump station that we will touch more on here momentarily, that, and that, of course, will be constructed directly to the north of the site, as well as the street connections to Rehoboth Road and the other transportation improvements we feel satisfy the requirement for greater roadway density and incorporation into the G3 intended growth sector designation. So here is the pump station as proposed, as the developer has been working with the, with the county, and he can share more with, with you on that a little bit later, if you so desire. They also own the parcel that's directly north of the property, and this is the location of where the pump station would be. So just north of the site proposed area. And the transportation details, I'll bring Matt and Brady on to talk about momentarily, but I'm gonna fast forward before I bring them on, just to remind you of the recommendations and the proposed conditions. So the staff recommendation is for approval of the conditional district rezoning from R2 and conditional use R2 to conditional district, R4 PRD, with the following conditions. The developer shall follow the conceptual site plan as presented. The developer shall construct the houses consistent with the submitted housing elevations as part of the conditional zoning district. There shall be no vinyl siding. Completion of a transportation mitigation agreement after rezoning that will include the installation of a traffic light at Rehoboth Road and NC 75 prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. A payment in lieu for transportation mitigations at the intersection of Old Providence Road and NC 75 set at $428,000. Payment, just payment dispersment in accordance with NC DOT municipal agreement. A payment in lieu for transportation mitigations at North Broom Street or NC 16 and NC 75 set at $172,000. Payment shall be made prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. And lastly, traffic calming measures as agreed upon with the town and the developer. The planning board also recommended approval of the conditional rezoning request unanimously at their meeting in July. So your options tonight for the requested action is a motion to approve the petition as presented. A motion to approve the petition with recommended amendments to the application, and that would be, as an example, that would be is if we work through this process and there is something that the board would like to see different or change as part of the request, as long as the developer is agreeable to that, that motion can be made. Or lastly, a motion to deny the petition as presented. The reasonableness and consistency statement, you have two options. The first one is the staff recommended option, which would read, "The conditional district rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxall, and is reasonable and in the public interest as it will allow for a 488-watt planned residential development in an area that will provide new infrastructure to accommodate the development and approve the surrounding service area with needed infrastructure upgrades. The infrastructure upgrades will allow this area to change from a G2 controlled growth sector area to a G3 intended growth sector area." Now, your other option would be, "The conditional district rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxall, but is not reasonable and in the public interest," and you would have to state that reasoning why you would think that it is not reasonable. So I want to go back, and I know traffic is a big discussion point as part of this, as well as sewer, and I want to bring in our town engineer, Mr. Matt Hubert, and our traffic consultant with Kimble Horn, Brady Finkley, and we can give a moment for Nick to bring them up on screen. I would like for them to go back over the, the traffic impact analysis with the board, and then talk a little bit about the mitigations, as well as the, as the sewer. Matt?
Yeah, good evening. Thanks, Jeff. Is everybody hearing me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yeah, so the, the TIA was completed, as required, to, to make sure we got everything in line ahead of the rezoning, and, and the details that came back are very well specific to, to the impacts that they, their traffic is expected to add on to the existing conditions that, that we have today. And so the, the main points here are that NC 75 and Old Providence Road would require a traffic signal and, and a reworking of the right turn lane, the eastbound right turn lane, and, and what that ends up being, because we've already engaged in improvement there with the, with the CRTPO to do a roundabout, which is a much safer and arguably aesthetically pleasing gateway into the town. We've offered to do a payment in lieu that's equivalent to the installation of a traffic signal and a replacement of the turn lane. That's why you see the, the $428,000 item in the, the proposal. Additionally, NC 16 and NC 75 is going Additionally, NC sixteen and NC seventy five is going to need. A an eastbound left turn lane that's that's turning north onto sixteen from NC seventy five if you're going toward Monroe. And again, the same thing, we know we have other mitigations there to to make improvements. And and so we would not be explicitly requiring them to to do the work, but simply to pay for their portion of the traffic that's that's in that queue. And and we'll take that money and and fold it into a larger project. That we hope to have online sooner sooner rather than later, certainly hopefully before this project starts to put any cars on the road. And then lastly, of of the main ones is is a signal at Rehoboth Road. And they will outright have to put that in of their own design and construction proceedings. And then the additional work is all just turn lanes into and out of the subdivision. Along their entryways at Rehoboth and Sims Road. And that's again, that's in meeting our our ordinance. And I'll just provide a a little background specific to the preserve and also to to the town's traffic. You know, we know there there's definitely concerns about the amount of growth we've had. Over the last couple of decades and not keeping pace with with necessary improvements. But I do want to say that the town CI ordinance was adopted in twenty sixteen and is more stringent than most. In terms of the the threshold at which we start requiring a study in mitigations and the degree to we study. Safety impacts and and additional. Things that that some some towns don't go to the that extent. The current application for the preserve does meet all the administrative requirements in the TIA. And because of the size and the access to DOT roads, it also meets DOT's concurrent. And just for a little more background, I think in recent memory. Most of our roadway and intersection improvements in Waxall are are predominantly completed by private. Developments as mitigations over our local county and or state projects. And they typically do them in a in a shorter timeline and and on a better streamlined budget. Because public funding is often designed and acquisition is held up by state regulations. And it makes it very difficult to to pull these things off in a timely and 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 cost effective manner. Some of these examples are Waxall Marvin Road and Kensington Drive, Waxall Marvin Road and Great Byram, Waxall Marvin and Falindale. North and South Church Street. Those are all improvements that we've recently completed that were in in connection with developer mitigations. Another layer that that certainly I think needs to be brought up is that there are a lot of improvements the town is 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 behind. In conjunction with the state and with the CRTPO to provide mitigations we know we need. But the the state's funding and and construction freeze has kept them from from being realized. And so. The the stoplight and turn lanes at Providence Road and Great Byram, that project should already be either built or or under construction. But that's been been halted by the state freeze. The Kensington Drive intersection improvements at NC sixteen are also being. Being held up from from proceeding into construction because of the the construction freeze. And then the downtown improvements as well are all locally funded and 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 public approved projects. That we've not been able to to deliver to the town. And and I I just want to make it known that we're aware and we're we're trying to 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 show. That that we can accomplish these these improvements, but. I don't want it to to seem like, one, we're not doing anything and two, that that development keeps happening unchecked. We we have all the plans and the funds technically in place. We are just not authorized by the state to proceed until they get their funding back in place. And we've known for some time now that that the town has to take a lead role in identifying and prosecuting our transportation improvements. That involve state maintained network. But only recently during the 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 initial budget freeze and then with the Corona impacts. Are we realizing how much local funding at at the town level is going to be necessary to make an impact in the short term? I think something that should also be clear because it it's been out in the public for for a few weeks now. The the town's decisions are are certainly within. Within our own capacity that we have and authority, but the county is perfectly capable of approving developments both inside town limits. And out and and adjacent to town limits where their jurisdiction still applies. And so it's it's not like a we're we're the only game in town. There there are certainly other developments that are going to impact us that that we don't necessarily have control or any ability. To to make mitigations occur for. And then I guess my last point is that the preserve is committing six hundred thousand dollars in funding for improvements. And these improvements are ones that the town is going to have to provide whether this project is approved or not. So they really either free up current public monies or reduce the amount of additional public projects. That that we can move forward over the same time period. And and I do think that that all bears putting on the record.
Thank you, Matt. Could you just touch on the sewer a little bit too?
Sure. Again, this is completely separate of of. The preserve being approved or denied. They've already agreed to donate the land to the county and to. Support what is a vital improvement to the sewer system. Not only to the future growth, but to the the current growth of downtown. A lot of capacity is is being added that is that is vital for for other areas of town, not just. This particular development. Again, if this will work, it will is approved and to move forward, it will be providing. Several million dollars in in tat fees to the county to help them kickstart. A lot of other capital improvement projects they have online. And and so this has been done in good faith. It's not a an a you or either you give us this pump station and 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 give us the 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 project. They've gone ahead and 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 made all the arrangements. And so the county is free to move forward with this regardless.
Thank you, Matt. I also want to take a couple of minutes just to touch on our process and make sure everybody understands our process. The developer slash applicant made the application for this back in July of twenty nineteen. And you know, they actually approached us earlier than that with pre-application meetings and things like that that we typically do before they make. An official application. And so once we receive an application like that and deem it. Valid enough to move forward, we start with a technical review of it. We send that out to a number of different organizations to review it. And that was done immediately after we received this application. Went through, all said and done, it went through four different review cycles. That lasted through the the spring. Now, within those that review cycle, they also conducted their neighborhood meeting back in the fall. Of twenty nineteen and that was done over at the at the meeting, the meeting place there right off of south. South Main Street. And that. Was done about the end of the or in the middle of the end of the first review cycle. Typically, the first review cycle is where you get the most comments and the most back and forth. But you know, with the project, the level of this, it took several more review cycles to get to where staff. Was comfortable moving the project forward. And so that happened. This past spring. In April is when we got to a point to we thought that we were comfortable enough to move the project forward in the process. But we were right at the beginnings of the pandemic and we. Talked with the developer and asked if they would be willing to wait this out a little bit to. To see how the governor's restrictions and things like that shake out over the next several. Several weeks and and he agreed to that. But of course, as you well know, we've continued on in this arrangement. For an indefinite period of time, the latest one we have until September eleventh. And we don't know what the governor will do beyond that. So as we got into the summer. I thought we had a real due process issue here and wanted to be fair to the developer. And in moving this forward because we do have the ability to do that by state law. The only requests that we cannot consider are quasi judicial type requests. And this is a legislative request. There's a lot of of back and forth throughout. State different jurisdictions, you know, who's doing rezonings, who's not. And most everywhere was moving forward with rezonings. And so. That's why, you know, we're at where we are today in this process now. And I'll say about the process and all all the reviews that that come with that. Some of the reviews, it's very, very simple as far as making notes that require. That they meet landscaping requirements or open space requirements or things like that. But then also towards the end, you get to where we discuss the conditions. And and of course, you hash out the the final things that would make us feel comfortable making your recommendation of approval. To the board. And that's where these conditions come in. I mean, we would not be sitting here today. If the developer did not agree to these and what we think are fair and reasonable for this type of. Of development, you know, some of them are very straightforward and they meet the conceptual site plan. They're consistent with the housing. Elevations that he's agreed to. Those are important, obviously. And of course, the traffic ones are where you really put in a lot of negotiating. Requiring the traffic light there at Rehoboth Road is is pretty easy, quite frankly. I mean, the the mitigation calls for that. So that's a pretty easy call. Then you have a lot of negotiation though, back and forth on the on the payment in lues, which we did. But we got to a point that that we felt like this was fair and reasonable. Contribution towards these projects for what they were mitigating. As as they're shared to these intersection areas based on what the TIA told us. And as and as Matt mentioned, the four hundred and twenty eight thousand, that is. The proposed payment in lieu for Old Providence Road and NC seventy five that. Pretty, pretty closely, but not completely pays for most of our twenty percent match that we'd be required to do. To move that project forward when it's scheduled funding is is or scheduled to go online in twenty twenty five. So that money then, if the developer pays for that. Then the town has that money to do another project with somewhere else. And the same can be said for the hundred and seventy two thousand there at the intersection of NC sixteen and seventy five. That gets us that much closer to finding a way to improve that intersection. So you total it all up and you're at least at a million dollars, probably, probably more than that. About one, one point something in improvements, which the developer can share. With you a little bit more about what that specific amount is. So. That's the last thing that you negotiate as part of these. And we got to that point of agreeance. And so then we moved the project along. And of course, this is why we're all. Here this evening at this point, after the planning board meeting and after the public hearing. Sometimes these processes don't take nearly as long. We typically tell somebody. With the conditional zoning process, the typical timeframe is five months. Usually that's about right for most, but sometimes you have a larger project. Sometimes you have more iterations and things you got to work through. And sometimes you have surprises come up like COVID nineteen and holding it back for for a little bit. So yes, this one's been strung out a little bit more than most. But that is the how and the why that we are to where we are in this. In this project today. So. I guess with that, I'll just open it up to any questions that the board may have. And I know the developer is. Online here too with his team and I know Matt can or Nick rather can. Get them on the screen for board questions as well.
Looks like we have Commissioner Simpson asking questions. Go with her first.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pappas. First off, I just really want to start by thanking all the citizens who wrote in and provided their feedback for and against this project. Your comments and feedback was really important to me and I really attempted to respond to all the emails that I got. And I did as best I could. So if you didn't get a response, I just want to reassure you that I did hear and did read what you wrote. Something that I noticed, there were many emails from residents who actually don't live within the city limits of Waxall and they live out in the Union County. And one of the remarks that I read that really resonated with me is that they stated. They really wish they were a part of the planning process instead of just the approval process. And I just want to encourage everyone to participate at Union County. They are looking for feedback for their twenty fifty comprehensive plan. Which is their future land use and zoning. I really would like to encourage everyone to get involved in that. You can go to unioncountync.gov for more information. They do hope to have that approved by the end of the year and they are looking for feedback. So please get involved in the planning process, just not the approval process. I also, reading through everyone's emails, several themes that sort of emerged that I really would like to see addressed by everyone online tonight. And one thing that I really would like to share is sort of like the history of this process or the history of this project. Back in two thousand and five, which is over fifteen years ago, this particular property was annexed into the town of Waxall. The original housing plot had five hundred and ninety six homes on it. Which subsequently was changed due to not having the adequate infrastructure, namely water and sewer. In two thousand and nine, almost eleven years ago, the town of Waxall adopted their twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Which on page nineteen defines low density, single family homes as zero point five to three dwellings per acre. And on page twenty two is a land use map depicting the property. Before us as low density housing, which is consistent with the document's definition. Currently, it's it's classified as intended growth section, which will allow two point three units per acre. The. Just to clarify, and I know Jeff, you touched upon this, is the planning and zoning process entails many, many steps. And first is the application being received by the town. The town staff works with the applicant and the planners and the engineers and they make any tweaks to the plan and so forth. And they and they get to a point where the project then goes to intergovernmental agencies. Such as Union County, the school system, police, fire, emergency services, NC DOT, FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers. And they provide their feedback, their recommendations, they make the necessary. Changes to the plan that 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 is needed. Then once the final plan is done, they goes through the planning board process as well as comes to us for their final approval. Some of the feedback that I got that I really want to address is the school system. The school system is controlled by Union County and Waxall doesn't necessarily have a say in that. However, my fellow board member, Commissioner Morey, took it upon himself to personally reach out to Dan Orgum. Who's the planning and construction manager for Union County Public Schools Facility Department. Mr. Orgam tracks all Union County residential developments and school utilizations. He compares the capacities with enrollment and when a school reaches ninety five percent utilization or capacity, it prohibits transfers into that school. If and when the utilization or capacity rates are equal to or greater than a hundred percent. Their options include mobile classrooms, redistricting and adding more brick and mortar buildings to the school system. And I'm sure that maybe someone here online can talk about that because I do know as part of this application process. That we did get the feedback from the school system. And I would like to know. Whoever wants to to take that question on and maybe answer the impact of schools and what they might have said.
I'll be happy to do that, Ann. So and it's also in your your staff report and it's down under section twelve. Under the proposed land use and general site plan data. So backing up in our process, as you mentioned, whenever we do send a plan out to our technical review committee. One of those reviewers is Mr. Augrum with the school system. And for every development, he provides us comments if they're pertaining to residential development. He doesn't have a whole lot to say when it's non-residential development, but. But in terms of residential development, what he will usually do is he will write about the, the school districts, the elementary school and then the secondary schools that they are, would be assigned to, what their projected rate of capacity would be based on the existing school year. And then a little bit of analysis of what he thinks that the immediate impact would be. And so his numbers in response to this, and this was based on the last school year and the projected capacity of Waxahaw Elementary School to be 84%. The Parkwood Middle School at 79%. And the Parkwood High School at 83%. But his key statement is there is not expected to be an immediate impact on school enrollments. There is a significant residential development in the works in the area. And so he mentions, as we talked about before, the Main Street Town Homes, which is the 117 unit age targeted community, Ardmore Apartments, Grove Manor, which is the, the other age restricted or age targeted community. And Millbridge for the southern portion of that, about 292 of the lots in Millbridge are assigned to Waxahaw Elementary or the Parkwood School System as well as Belshire. So he mentioned all those. And of course, he, he mentioned that it would not be an immediate impact on the area. So, you know, if we did have a problem with it in some way, of course, we, we listen to that and we pay attention to that. And so the purpose of sending these plans to him really serves two purposes. We want to hear his comments on how he feels like it would impact, but it's also for their planning purposes. As you mentioned, it is a county function. So, you know, one of our ways that we work with the county is make them aware when proposed developments are coming on. And then if they get approved, they can make their appropriate facility, uh, facility planning. As you mentioned before, you know, whether they decide to redistrict, whether they decide to build another school. It's based on, based on these numbers that they get, uh, when they get to that point that they have to, to do that. And, you know, we're not the only town that, that, that does that in the county. I don't know if all the towns do, but many of the towns share this information with the, the county whenever they have a, a proposed request like this. So that's how the process works and working with the schools.
I could just add to that. Thank you, Commissioner Simpson, for bringing that up. The numbers are, taking into consideration much of this growth that's already happening or in the process. One thing that I found also interesting is they included these with projections. And to go back to something that we were discussing before, Jeff, if you could just go back over the phases so that we get a better picture of phase one. That would, that would be starting anytime soon. And how long would we take to get to phase five? And how would that's going to impact the schools?
I will bring the map up, but that is a, as far as the timing of the phasing, that is a better question to be answered by the developer. Marcus, are you there?
Yeah, Jeff, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can you see me?
Yes.
All right, all right, good, good, good. All right, everything's working. Yeah. Commissioner Moray, the, the, the way that we are phasing this is we, we've got, we have to go through a pretty good extraordinary CD process of our construction documents still after this process. We still have to submit drawings to the, to the town and the state as well. And continue to work with several other entities to, to fulfill our obligations as far as development. That, we would hit that stride on phase one. We wouldn't see probably some grading until maybe 12 months from now. Lead that into, you know, once we get into mass grading and construction, I would say before C houses in, in phase one would be right around year two. Phase two would probably follow suit on that as we continue to go into other mass grading into phase three. And four would follow suit on, on years five, six and seven. And then probably finish off on, on a phase five quarterly on year seven, eight, nine, and maybe spill it right into, into 10 on, on this, this type of development. So the impact from, as we spit today, would be roughly eight to 10 years on, on, on the way with that, that this property would actually impact the, the, the schedule.
So the full weight of the project that impacts schools and it impacts traffic, we wouldn't feel the full weight for approximately, how long, eight years?
Yes, yes, right, eight to 10 years would be probably be the, the full weight of the project.
And the first phase not for another year or two?
We would see housing, you would see basically in year two, yes. Where we stand today with, with the amount of, of CD documents that we have to get, you wouldn't see housings and housing in there until year two. Same thing, I mean, we, we, with, with the way that the pump station is scheduled to be constructed, that lines up as that, that spills into roughly fourth quarter, right at this point, fourth quarter 2021, first quarter of 2022 before that rough, before the pump station in that general area would be commissioned in.
Does that have to go in before the beginning of the project?
Excuse me?
Does that have to go in before the beginning of your project?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Moray, that, that, that does have to be commissioned in. And, and we wouldn't be able to do anything with the, with any housing and getting COs before that pump station is completed and commissioned.
We got to see Mayor Pro Tim McMillan. We'll just go around a little bit. I see the hands all coming up. So Mayor Pro Tim will let you ask a couple of questions. We'll circle back to anybody who needs to. So take your time and Mayor Pro Tim, the floor is yours for the moment.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up a little bit with that because in reading, and I just also want to say as Commissioner Simpson noted, I have also received the emails and read both, uh, the emails for and against and read all of them and have tried also to respond to everyone who has sent an email and taking in everything that has been said for consideration, looking at the data, looking at past and current and future conditions. But to follow up a little bit with the building, because that is a question that many of the residents have asked in the overcrowding with the schools. We talked a little bit about the build out and that the first homes would not be built or we would not see that for at least two years. That is a question that's been asked by many people with regard to overcrowding, with regard to schools. And when you say the build out in two years, are you indicating that that would be the start of phase one? Or would you be into phase one in approximately two years' time? That's my first question. That would go to the developer. Please take note of that. I'm going to ask a couple of quick questions so I can let everyone else ask their questions. In reading some of the other emails that I have received, another question was with regard to the infrastructure that came from a resident over on Sims Road. And we spoke a little bit about the TIA. The TIA, did that take into consideration? I think the question spoke that it took into consideration 75, but did it also take into consideration Rehoboth? And does the TIA point out potential line of sight issues with entrances onto Rehoboth? Which was a question from a resident. And I will ask one more quick question, then I'll follow up a little later after everyone else. And that has to do with, we talked about the sewage system. A question came in from a resident regarding storm water, uh, storm and rain water runoff as well as well water contamination. Can you talk about any runoff or high pressure from the sewer lines that may also come up with the sewage plant? Those are my three quick questions right now and then I'll follow up later.
Yes, Commissioner McMillan, thank you for those questions. Let me be clear on, on going back to Commissioner Moray's phasing questions to that. The two years before we look at housing would be before, because of the construction documents, the CDs that we have to go in the process that we have to go through with all the different municipalities throughout the state, county and, and, and town. Before we can actually have mass grading housing, we project at this point where we're at right now is about two years before you see in phase one. The project as a whole to complete one, two, three, four, and five phases would be projected anywhere from eight to 10 years depending on what the, what the climate would be as that. So from where we stand today, and so from where we stand today, phase one, we won't see housing in that area for the first couple of years really, um, for where we stand. Go back again to the, the, the pump station would not be basically in commission as that will be around a year build and that won't start until November at this point, November 2020. And by the time any incidentals or anything, that won't be a really commission until first quarter, fourth quarter of 2021, first quarter of 2022 at this point, according to Public Works, Union County Public Works. Let me fast forward your second question there and, and, and go to storm water and then we'll come back to the TIA. And let me bring in Rob, if I can bring in Rob and/or Mark with, with Land Design.
Yeah, with Mark.
Yeah. Let me make sure they can log in here. Rob and Mark, are you guys available?
If they're not available, I'll try to answer the question. The storm water runoff will be coordinated with both local and state officials. We have new water quality ponds on there that not only retain the water, but they also treat the storm water runoff so that it's discharged at a pre-development rate. But those are fairly new regulations that some of your older, older subdivisions may have had some storm water ponds, but not to the degree and capability that the new regulations from the state have on this project. So this project was broken down into drainage areas. So these ponds serve the various areas on the site plan and treat the storm water and then discharge it into the streams at a pre-development rate.
Let me, let me pause this real quick. Ms. McMillan, let me pause this real quick and can I, Jeff, can we, we have Mark Kime and Rob Cluck that are trying to get on. They have to be accepted, I believe, or allowed in?
I just got on and I think Dale Stewart as well is online.
Okay, so hopefully our IT folks are making sure they're getting brought into the conversation.
Yeah, if we can, if we can, to add to that, just to answer Commissioner McMillan's question on storm water.
Just, I would just like to add a comment regarding storm water because I did have a comment from a resident too that was talking about the storm water. And if it goes into the creek, is any improvement's going to be needed on Rehoboth Road? I believe it goes underneath the road. And I was just, wanted to see if you could do, to talk to that or speak to that.
Yeah, Commissioner Simpson, Commissioner McMillan, let me, let me introduce the, the gentleman. We have Dale Stor, we have Mark Kime and we have Rob Cluck that are with us. They are with Land Design. They have vast knowledge as to be able to answer this as the, in the most professional manner to make sure that all of us, including myself, are, are well educated on to this. They have vast knowledge as to working with everybody that you have mentioned from NC Dener, NC DEQ, as well as the, 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 the state regarding, regarding these issues. So let me, let me, I'm going to kind of do a quick microphone check if you don't mind and just check and see if, if Dale, Mark or Rob, or any of you guys on there?
Yes, I'm available here.
I am on as well. This is Rob.
Need to ask Dale to unmute his mic if he can.
Mark and Dale and Rob, the question that, that Commissioner McMillan asked, I don't know if you guys were able to hear, but on storm water runoff, can you, can you guys elaborate and inform on, on that so we can answer that question, please?
Yeah, so when we are required to design a site for storm water controls, we are, we design sites in a manner that we are going to be obviously concentrating flow into certain areas of the site in order to, to build the lots and build the right of way. We design these structures in a manner that we release the water back into natural environments at a rate that is equal to or lower than the current point of discharge. So while we might concentrate that flow, we're going to draw it down slowly. That therefore we're not creating a flooding condition downstream. Rob, I didn't know if you wanted to elaborate on that?
Yeah, and, and to the answer, I mean, we won't be releasing any additional water to that, to the existing floodway below Rehoboth Road so that there will be no improvements to that existing pipe underneath Rehoboth Road. We have to detain the water and like Mark said, we cannot release it any faster or any additional water than what the current site currently discharges.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Can we also follow up now with the question regarding the TIA?
Yeah. Yeah, Brady, I think Brady. Brady, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes. Go ahead, Brady.
Hey, good, good evening. Brady Finkley, Kim Lee Horn. I was, uh, we were contracted with the town to perform the TA on behalf of the town. And to, to answer your second question there, Commissioner, I believe it was on, it was a more of a two-part question, it sounded like. So I think the question on, did we include analysis on Rehoboth? And the answer is yes. So we, we did include the three intersections we talked about on 75. But down on Rehoboth, we, we included three intersections. One existing, which is the intersection at Richardson King Road and the two proposed driveways along Rehoboth. And to answer the second part of that question about the site distance, that will be determined and reviewed and approved as a part of the NC DOT's driveway permit process. We, we do touch on it in the TIA. We don't necessarily get into the design portion of that in the TIA. However, it, it was part of the recommendations of the TIA to, to make sure that appropriate site distance is achieved there because we do know that Rehoboth does kind of wind around. And I believe our last discussion with NC DOT, our, our most recent discussion is, did confirm that both of those driveways, if they do not meet appropriate site distance, that they'll have to be restricted to, to either leftover or right in, right out operations where one or, or multiple turns into or out of that driveway may be restricted dependent on the, the site distance that, that the developer will, will, will submit to NC DOT for, for review and approval.
Thank you.
Moving around my screen, Commissioner Westlake, I don't want to leave you out. I see you over there and you just unmuted. So the floor is yours for questions?
Well, actually I don't have any questions. I'm going to need about five minutes for a statement. So just when questions are completed, I'll be happy to speak then.
Very good. Moving back around to questions, I see Commissioner Simpson up there. Floor is yours again?
Great, thank you. I just kind of wanted to go back to the schools for a second. And so if I understood what you're saying is because of the phasing, and you're going to be going to that, if I had a child starting kindergarten right now, they would probably be in the second or third grade before your first home would probably be built and occupied.
Yes, Commissioner Simpson, that, that's, that's accurate.
Or if I had somebody starting high school, they could potentially be graduated by the time you have a first house built?
Depend, yeah, if they were juniors, going into the junior year, I would, I would feel comfortable answering yes to that.
Okay, makes sense. Something else if someone could speak to, because I did receive emails from residents saying that they weren't notified. So if someone could, could talk to me what the notification process is and how that works?
Yes, absolutely, I can, I could do that, Ann. And actually, before I even answer that, Marcus brought up a point that I didn't even think about making as far as the construction document approval process. And really, this conditional zoning is still, believe it or not, the early steps in being able to move forward with the project. I mean, this, this would make the policy decision to be able to continue to move forward. But as Marcus said, believe it or not, that long set of plans that you have is not the fully engineered plans. You know, those are what you would say quasi-engineered plans. So if they are able to move forward, then they have to go back and provide us with what we call construction documents, which would be the fully engineered plans. And they go back through review cycles. And they typically can take two to three review processes. So we haven't had anybody get through that process in one review yet, not saying it's not possible, but the record is also 11 reviews to this point. So there's no guarantees that they would get through a process quickly. They very, very well, if we get to that point, or it may take a while. So there's a timing, timing involved in that. Once their construction document plans are approved, then, you know, they can start moving forward with these other processes as he mentioned. So the noticing, so we are required by state law to notice projects in the three different ways, and that is sending out first-class notices to property owners that join the property. And we are also required to put out signs in places that they can be seen to the best of your ability. And we're also required to run ads in a paper of regular circulation in the area. That one happens to be the Enquirer Journal. The signs were placed out on Rehoboth Road where we thought they would get the most visibility. And now the letters, what we do there is that we send them out based on what the, what the Union County Tax Department tells us as to where the tax bills go, i.e. the owner of the, of the property. So that's where they go. And of course, that's up to the US post system as to whether, whether they get there or not, and they almost exclusively do. But that's where we send them to is the last, or the address that is on the tax records. So that's how that, that plays out for the public hearing process. There's also a neighborhood meeting process that is required to be done prior to the, to the planning board meeting. And of course, that one was completed back in the fall, had attendees from within the development and some surrounding the development. That one is the responsibility of the, of the developer and for holding that meeting and running that meeting. And of course, where we usually attend that, a staff member does, in the case of this one, myself, a couple of our engineering team members were there along with their developers and then folks from the public that came to that, to that meeting. So I can't claim, you know, 100% that every, every letter gets to every single property owner in these processes. I can't do that, but you know, I can tell you that they get sent. And you know, for, for the most part, we know that, that most of them get to where they're supposed to go because of all the response that we get in regards to these, to these processes.
Great, so what you're saying, if someone says that I live next to the property and I never received a letter, what would be some reasons why that might have occurred? Because I have received emails that said, you know, I live right next door, I never received a letter, I never received notification. And, you know, I just, I just want to see, you know, what could be some, what could be a possibility for that?
Ah, well, I guess the first possibility would be the US Postal Service, it's not making its way there for whatever reason. The second possibility could be that the, whatever the last ownership was, it's changed and it hasn't been updated in the county records. I suppose that would be a possibility too, such as if somebody moves or changes their, their billing address for whatever reason, they notify the county and then, of course, the county has to make that change in their system. I don't know how long it takes for them to do that or not to do that, but that would be another possibility, I think, that would come to mind.
And so those, those addresses are based off the tax records from the county or for the property?
They're based on what we pull up from the GIS, which is from the tax card.
Okay, so wherever you have your taxes mailed to is where sort of your, I guess, if you would say, your address of record?
The owner, yes. That's who's responsible for the property taxes.
Great. And then just to clarify, which I heard earlier, and I think this was went back to Matt, maybe the water and sewer has no impact per se on this project in terms of any sort of negotiation, I guess, so that that is a Union County project between Union County and the landowner that has really no bearing on terms of this project with the exception of it providing an upgraded utility? I mean, in terms of the negotiation that has, that's between the county and the applicant, correct?
That sounds like a Matt question.
Right, and so my, my understanding and looking at everything that, that developers provided and county is confirmed, and Marcus can maybe verify as well, is that, yeah, they are, they are moving forward independent of this project.
Okay. I had a couple environmental questions. I did receive a comment from a resident that when they looked at the picture, just to confirm, there'll be no building in the floodplain?
That is correct, there won't be any construction within the floodplain or any...
And it's illegal to put something on a floodplain, is it not?
Oh, yeah, we don't have any permits to do that.
Sure. And then somebody else maybe want to, want to answer this is that I did receive some comments and some concerns regarding intrusions on people's horse farms, that they could be residents or citizens or people accessing neighboring horse, horse farms or disturbing their, their horses? Anybody want to take that?
Yeah. Mark or, or, I think probably Mark would be best suited for that. Mark, we met with several, I met with several homeowners on adjacent properties, especially specifically on the, on the south side. I think you and I spoke to the, to those meetings, if we can elaborate in deep detail as to the roadway as in front of those units, the way that those particular housing will actually be correspond with the properties to the south and to the west of us. If you can elaborate there and go in deep detail to those and talk about changing the topography and so on, so forth. Thank you.
So around the perimeter of the project, this is all sides, including the southern side, we do have a 30-foot undisturbed buffer that's wooded. We've gone through and done some preliminary engineering on those lots in question. And the way the topography falls in that site, we've got a cut slope once we get onto the lots, and those lots are actually sitting probably 10 feet below that undisturbed buffer. So we've got a good bit of gap between those homes and that horse farm. I couldn't say with any certainty that nobody would ever walk up there, but it just, it doesn't seem too plausible. I don't think we're encroaching onto that land where we're putting residents in their backyards right on top of their property, so that answers your question.
Is there any going to be any type of barrier or anything in there that would be to delineate between the property lines, or is it just going to be all just the natural landscape and trees that are there?
It's currently just the natural landscape. Marcus, correct me if I'm wrong, but is his property fence as it stands currently?
There's a couple of yes that are fenced, so there are, I thought there was a particular site, I thought that there was a possible retaining wall for us to be able to, and again, there's several that we, we've spoken with. So I don't actually want to pinpoint one particular one, but I believe that there was a combination of 10-foot basically a topography adjustment. There is retaining walls on a few as well as, as possible fencing that we'll have to basically adjust on, on, on that as well with, and then with the 30-foot buffer. So there's several, Commissioner Simpson, to answer your question, there's several different aspects as to how we're going to be addressing that. But to, to answer your, your question, there's a topography change from, from our property to adjacent properties that we, we're going to bring back all of our area. I think it settles roughly about, on average, Marcus, it's safe to say about nine to 10 feet.
That's correct.
On that south side. And again, this is, this is early-stage engineering that we were able to address and see what does need to take place there to be, see on an overall scale. A lot more will, will be done through our construction documents and our CDs.
Great, and I have one last question, kind of falls into the environmental piece, and I know that this is being built on 212 acres. Is there a certain conservation or preserve area that you're required to maintain in terms of green space or any of that? Or is there anything, or what you have built in?
So yes, for this type of development, we are required to provide 20% internal tree save. And our current plans are showing, we've got about 14 acres in the exterior, we have over 50 acres of tree save on the interior, which puts us at about 30%. And then we also have the common open spaces, it totals out at 70.56 acres, which is about 33% of the site.
So what you're saying is you have over 70 acres that are going to be preserved and used for tree space, which is about a third of your, of the total development?
I think it's 64 acres, I think it's 70, 70 acres total open space, which would include the, some of the pocket parks. But the majority of it, yes, the intent is to leave it undisturbed of this, of the 64 acres that are tree saved, they will not be disturbed.
Correct, okay, excellent, I don't have any, I don't think I have any further questions.
Looks like we have, next up, we'll go back to Mayor Portman McMillan, saw your hand up there?
Yes, I just want to follow up on that a little bit with the tree saving and the acreage that you're going to have for green space or walking trails. I'm just looking over some of the other questions. But also, it was stated that with the development, if approved tonight and the density that you were asking for now, it would be the same density as with the R4. Am I correct in what I heard earlier?
So the, the zoning would be R4, yes, it would be R4. Now, a typical, a typical R4 conventional subdivision is around four, a little less than four units per acre, it's about 3.6 is what a typical R4 would allow if developed conventionally or up to that point. And they can, of course, do below that if they wish to do. And that is, that is what they're doing here with the 2.29 units per acre.
Okay, follow up to that, with the, with this development, if, if approved, does this allow for more or less green space than what it is currently zoned for?
Well, what is currently zoned for is R2. And if they did a conventional subdivision, which is, if somebody wanted to develop that out based on the current zoning, I could not imagine that they would cluster it or, I guess, PRD it for our nomenclature here. They would almost certainly develop it out as a conventional subdivision, divide it all out with, with the existing land into the conventional lot structure, which would put all of the area within private ownership. So, you know, then they would be able to do with that area what they wish. Some of them, you know, would, would not do anything with that, but others would be able to do whatever they wanted within that area. So basically, with the conventional subdivision, you would not get the guarantee of the protected area for, for open space requirements that are required to be within a HOA or other type of public protected area.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, before we move on, I've got a question or two for the group, probably specifically over to the applicant. A couple of questions that I got along the way were, if you could describe the amenity, the internal amenities, any clubhouses, buildings, things like that and trails, you know, what does that, you know, is that part of the plan? And the other question was, you know, would there be, back from some of the owners that live in the existing neighborhood, what happens to that neighborhood and all the uncompleted improvements? Who takes care of that?
Mayor Papas, so the amenity, the amenity package that we are committing to here is what will consist of a, about a $1.5 million amenity clubhouse that will have a pool kid area as well as a fitness area. And, and right behind there, we're actually looking into some, some really, really neat things that, that we got together with one, one of the residents in the area, actually reached out to Commissioner McMillan, and we were able to meet with the family and walk onto our property and, and actually discover a heritage oak, I believe, and maybe two. And, and we want to bring that into, into the mix as well, to be able to have the walkability through some nature area and actually have a really, like, really, really nice nestled area on the backside of the location of the amenity. That will bring, that's got a beautiful story behind it. I think it's, I think it's part of the fabric of Waxall that we like to showcase and as well as be part of this community. As far as nature trails and stuff, we, I'll let, I'll let our, our design team kind of elaborate a little bit more on there, but we do have nature trails throughout all of the green space all around the, the area. This, this is pretty raw land, it's, it's tough terrain, it's beautiful. And we do want to showcase that through some of the nature trails, maybe something like what we see over at the Greenway, if anybody's taken some time to walk the Greenway on our, over there off of Meadow Springs, we do see something very similar possibility here to be able to walk in that and in those areas. To answer your question regarding the, the existing neighbors and the existing community in there, we, we met with, we took time to meet with, with that community this past Saturday and we talked in depth. It was, it was a really good meeting as a, you know, not that everything went as I would want it to do, but it was just a really good meeting collaboration to actually sit down with our neighbors and know that we're involved with each other and looking out for the best interests of, of that particular community, which is just a beautiful road there on Waxall. So we, we have some infrastructure issues that currently do arise. We knew that when we did our due diligence, when we purchased the, the property, not just the surrounding 200-plus acres, but we also really incorporated the 29 lots that were still left there. And so rather than leaving that neighborhood alone, we went ahead and dove into doing some due diligence, finding out what the issues were in there. And, and we got some feedback through three different contractors to fix those issues, which consists of storm water as well as some, some beducane curb and gutter. And then there was a final lift on the property that, that had to, had to be placed as far as asphalt. We got, we got valuations on that range. We got valuations on that, it ranged anywhere from $330,000. This is in 2017, so you can probably add 10% to that accordingly for every year, all the way upwards of $400,000. So we see roughly about a $400,000, $125,000 fix on that particular piece of property, which we are committed to, the fix.
Who would have, who would have been likely the candidates to pay for that had you not come along?
Mayor Papas, that's actually, I would point the finger back at, for maybe Mr. Wells to answer that because it was a private road, there was no bond on that. Typically, the answer right there, and I say, but the answer right there would possibly be the homeowners that bought in there.
Marcus is correct, I mean, a couple of different things. Number one would be the homeowners in there could assess themselves to get the road up to improvement standards. The town, it's still in private ownership. The town has never accepted the road and would not consider accepting the road until it met town standards, that's our policy. Now, I suppose it would be possible if the Board of Commissioners could make an exception to that in some cases approved by the board, but that would not be something that your staff would recommend because as, I guess, in this particular case, the improvement just to get it up to town accepted standards, meaning fixing the storm drains, which when we go out and we inspect these roads, we camera them to make sure that they were installed correctly, replacing cracked curb and gutter, replacing cracked sidewalks, and before we accept it as well as putting a final lift of asphalt in. When all those things are in place, then you usually find these things on your consent agenda that they've all been approved and up to snuff to our standards by our town engineer and our public services department. Somebody would have to have done that, either the homeowners would have had to assess themselves or some other developer would have to come in there and do that because they don't meet the town standards and we would not intend to accept them until they do.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Let me go back to, I think, fully answer your question, Mayor Papas, regarding the green space trails. I'd like to see if maybe Mark or one of team members there can elaborate a little bit deeper on that, please.
Sure, and we have an extensive trail system that is really following the, we've got two long stream corridors that are running through this project as well as the floodplain. The intention would be to have more of a natural surface trail field located. What we want to do is minimize disturbance to those natural ecosystems while providing a leisure activity for the residents. But yeah, minimal impact would be preferable.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else in the group want to add to that, they can, but any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Westlick, you've requested some time. We are certainly having that time for you, so you've got the floor.
Okay, well, there's been so much interest in this project. I felt like I needed to spend some time to talk through how I am coming to the decision that I'm coming to. I want to thank the developers and the town staff for all the work they've done to put this together. And I also want to thank all the citizens who emailed their input. And I want you to know, I've read over 200 public comments and emails. When I drive along Rehoboth and Sims Road, I immediately notice the winding scenic roads and beautiful horse farms. It reminds me of how Providence Road and Waxahaw Marvin Road used to look before the large land developers transformed the area. It was great to see an area that has still maintained the heritage Waxahaw was known for. The preserved neighborhood as it is designed right now does manage to seamlessly fit into the horse farms and countryside landscape. It's a lovely neighborhood. But when I ran for office, I stated I support smart growth development, not no growth. I believe I have used the smart growth principles in all of my previous votes. I have voted in favor of subdivisions where it made sense, mostly where it was infill development of currently developed areas where connectivity and walkability are possible or where it fit housing needs such as an active adult community. During my campaign, I stated it was critical that Waxahaw determines how we grow, not the developers dictating how we grow. I will welcome and partner with developers who bring us projects that fit our needs and vision. So with that in mind, I've taken several factors into account. This board and the past board has had a consistent message, we need commercial growth, not houses. We need to lower our residential tax base from its current level, which we were informed today is now 90%, but this does not account for the current unoccupied residential projects from Ardmore Apartments, Grove Manor, Lindsey Meadows, the new phases of Millbridge, North Broad Street Townhomes, Main Street Townhomes, and Belshire. I also am considering the environmental impact this development would have on the multiple waterways, stream crossings, and wildlife on this property. How will this project fit smart growth principles when one of the principles is preserving farmland, natural beauty, and critical environmental areas? I am aware the developers' original plan, when they annexed, was 596 homes. That doesn't matter to me. The original zoning wasn't approved for that, it was approved for just over 200 homes. The developers donated land for a pump station, that is appreciated, but this pump station will be constructed either way by the county due to the need for an update and additional development for downtown. As for the proposed road improvements, the developer will provide funds for three future road improvements to account for the additional 500 cars. One of these intersections was already designated as a critical intersection by the county and planned for, so the project would be adding more cars to an already dangerous intersection. The stoplight at Rehoboth has never been a need until this project was proposed. Yes, the developer would give money for these projects, but these are state roads and completion of these projects is at the mercy of NC DOT. It doesn't mean these improvements will be done when people move in. Case in point, Millbridge's road intersection improvements that have just been completed. We are already playing catch-up with the traffic in roads, so is swapping money for more cars really worth it? Also, it may be a few years before we feel the effects from this new traffic, but Rehoboth and Sims Road will feel the immediate effect of construction traffic consisting of dump trucks, logging trucks, and heavy equipment on a very curvy road. We also don't fully understand the impacts of the traffic that will be coming from the other new neighborhoods I previously mentioned, like the apartments downtown. What will be the impact of our schools? The amount of influx of students from this larger development could trigger redistricting for many years to come. The town of Waxahaw has no control over building new schools. This text is straight from our land use plan describing this as a G2 controlled growth sector. The controlled growth sector essentially provides the town of Waxahaw with an urban reserve of land that it can be used to facilitate growth following the market's exhaustion of the land resources in the intended growth sector G3. So I ask you, is our G3 land exhausted? Do we have a shortage of housing or a need for more housing? The answer is no. Is this smart growth? No. Is this balancing our commercial residential tax base? No. Is this what our citizens want? And the answer is a resounding no. I think about Waxahaw's brand pillars, heritage and well-being. Keeping these words in mind, I am siding with our citizens and not big development on this particular issue. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you for that. Would anybody like to address the questions that might have been asked in that statement? I have Mayor Portem McMillan, I see your hand up, you have the floor, please.
I appreciate Commissioner Westlick's comments and her opinions regarding her concerns for this rezoning request. I would ask if, one question I do have, I have a couple. But one question is, can the town manager please speak to the item Commissioner Westlick stated regarding the land use plan?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Well, you know, for this particular piece of property, I mean, the only land use that makes sense for this is single-family residential detached housing. It can't be an employment center, which, you know, in our new land use plan and zoning process, we're looking to open up areas in different parts of town for that opportunity. This area also is within the town. It is surrounded by county area, but it is in the town. It's been sitting here within the town limits since 2005. So I do consider this to be infill development. You know, we would be talking differently if this was somebody that wanted to annex into the town. Our consistent message to people annexing it, who are interested in annexing into the town, and I can tell you that there are a lot of people that are interested in that, our consistent message is, is to provide us with some type of non-residential component as part of your annexation request. Exclusively would be great, but for the most part, we also have to understand what the market is here, and that is residential. But that doesn't mean that we have to accept anything additional into the town that is strictly residential, so that is our consistent message. But when you have an existing piece of land that is already within the town limits and that's really all it can be, I think that's why we're at this place that we are now. The development has been dormant, I guess for lack of a better way to say it, for over a decade. I can't say for sure that nobody would come back and finish out the development at the acre lots. Do I feel like it ever would be done in these current circumstances? I don't think so, and that's because the sewer, to be located there to the north, I can't imagine anybody else interested in coming back and developing this property at the acre, well, technically 40,000 square foot lots, which is just under an acre. So you would have, they would have the ability to develop, as it's currently zoned, roughly 230 lots on the 212 acres of property. It's been sitting here in this state for a very long time. No improvements, no amenities. The only way that it would be developed out in this way is if it was done at a big loss. And with the sewer to the north there, I just have a hard time seeing that ever happening. So I feel like you're really making a choice between either allowing a development there at this type or not allowing anything there for the foreseeable, perhaps, forever future. I think that's really what the decision comes down to this evening.
Jeff, I have a question from a resident before landowner talking about the current existing use on the property that would, by zoning, if I'm not mistaken, would allow more than one structure if it went on to the R2. Is that, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, sure, we actually allow accessory dwellings in most of our residential zoning districts. So I guess of what you're asking, in theory, the existing development, they could build an accessory dwelling provided it was a small percentage of what the existing structure is and on the rear side of the property.
So essentially, what you're saying, if what you're saying is true, they could have two dwelling units on each lot?
Theoretically, yes, if a property owner wanted to do that, they could put an accessory dwelling on their property, assuming that it meets setback requirements, yes.
So those, potentially those 230-ish lots could be 460 in its current condition?
I guess if everybody wanted to do that, you could theoretically say that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions and comments by anybody on the screen here? I've got almost like a Hollywood Squares going on, you have to look for everybody. So give me a little heads up if there's any other comments. Seeing none so far, yell out if it is, but if it isn't, then certainly appreciate, this is a very lengthy and good dialogue. Thank you, everybody who's participated with the questions and the answers and the conversations and the history of this project. So seeing if there are no further questions on this thing, I guess we move to the next, next part of this stuff is the motion. And you, as the commissioners, have the choice to make a requested action. And so I am at this time going to ask for a motion along with the optional, or not optional, actually required motion too, which would be the reasonableness and consistency statement for or not. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Morey.
Let's make a motion to approve petition CD 009-145-2019 to rezon from R2 Single Family Residential and CU R2 Conditionally Used Single Family Residential to CD R4 PRD, conditional district single-family residential plan, residential development as presented.
Very good, Charlie, if you can help us a little bit on this. We had talked one time about combining the reasonableness and consistency statement in one fell swoop. Would they need to do that in the motion as well?
Well, the way it's set up this evening, we have not talked about this before the board before, so I would do it in two separate motions, just to be consistent with what we've gone up to this point. But we need to have the board decide whether in the future they want to do it as one or two motions.
Very good, thank you for that update. So we have a motion on the table to approve the petition. And so, any comments? Okay, with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Commissioner Morey.
All right.
Commissioner Westlick.
Nay.
Mayor Portem McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Very good. Second proposal, it's a three to one on approval on that. Second proposal, if you would then make the statement for the reasonableness and consistency. May I have a motion on that, please? Commissioner Morey, you can if you want to continue that.
Okay. The conditional district rezoning request is considered, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The future planning goals, the title Waxahaw is reasonable in public interest as it allows for 480 lot planned residential development in an area that will provide new infrastructure to accommodate the development and prove the surrounding service area with the infrastructure upgrades. The infrastructure upgrades will allow this area to change from G2 controlled growth sector area to G3 intended growth sector.
Very good, any comment on that motion, please? Seeing none, roll call vote, we'll go back to Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Nay.
Mayor Portem McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. So both motions have passed, three to one. Looking forward to having this thing get out of the ground and take other improvements. And so I appreciate everybody, again, all the input. Again, we've received a lot of your public comments and appreciate the participation by those inside the town limits. So appreciate everybody participating in the process. With that, we'll move on to, since we have no new business. At this time, I understand, and we have some general public comments. If I'd have the town clerk take over from here and read those out.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we've received three public comments that are general in nature. The first one was submitted by Lenora Barber at 4101 Christine Lane. The first one was submitted by Lenora Barber at forty one oh one Christine Lane. And the comment is, stop destroying Waxaw by constantly building and rezoning. It's disgusting what you people are doing. You should be ashamed of yourselves picking money over the people whom you are supposed to be serving. This second comment was from Burya Cravens from forty five oh six Magnolia Ridge Drive. The comment is related to the selling of park property. I am a hundred percent against the sale of town park property. The thirty-four acres needs to be opened as green space with or without improvements, which can be done later. And the third comment is from Stephanie Thomas from John Craig Road in Waxaw. It's also regarding selling parkland. Please stop developing this small town. People moved here for the charm and quaintness, and those who have been waiting years for the development of the proposed parkland are very upset that you will be selling it. With all of the new people you have approved to come in without consideration for those of us who drive or walk these roads and the new social distancing guidelines, there will be no outdoor space unless you live in an H O A with sidewalks. Please stop. Our children can't even go outside to play. And that was the end of the public comment period.
Very good. Thank you, Melody. Appreciate those comments from the citizens. And we certainly will look at all of those as we as we always do, actually. At this point, again, moving forward, the town leadership reports. I'm going to turn this back over to first person on it is back to the town manager. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one announcement. Townwide reminder that our fall cleanup week is scheduled to begin next week, so want to give a few reminders out to our citizens in relation to that. Remember to have your items out for pickup by six A M. this coming Monday morning, August thirty first. The routes for pickup will vary, and it will take a majority of the week to pick up everything. So please be patient with our public services staff. If your items sit out there for a few days, we will certainly do our best to get everything picked up by the end of the week. So another thing to note is that all items may not be removed at once. If you have a pile there on the street, it will depend on what it is as to which truck picks it up. So if part of your pile gets picked up and the rest remains, rest assured that another truck will come by at some point in the week and pick up the rest. If you do get to the end of the week and you still have things at the street, then please give us a call. And we will certainly do our best to get back out there anything that that was missed. So items that will be picked up, items such as mattresses and box springs, white goods, which are all of your various appliances, furniture, television, general household items, and then items that will not be picked up, motors, batteries, car parts, oil, paint, hazardous chemicals, tires, and building materials. And we know people have been anxiously awaiting this event because typically we do it twice a year, but we had to call off the spring one because of COVID. But now we are ready to roll with this in the fall, and so we are happy to provide this this welcome service to our citizens in Waxaw. And so again, just remind to please be patient with the process. It will take a while to get through all of our streets and get all of this stuff up, but we will strive to have it done. And out of your way, all the street as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Very good. I bet everybody's looking forward to getting rid of all the stuff they didn't get rid of at the first go around. So it's piling up in the streets all over as I see it right now. So I hope they they get through it pretty quick. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Dana Savinsky. Dana, you're back up again. Welcome back.
Thank you. So I wanted just to go over a few awesome things that were happening with our Park and Rec Department into the summer activities as well as upcoming activities. And just to give you an update on what's open and closed for the park system. There we go. As always, you can go to our rec desk to sign up for future programming. We do have limited space on a majority of our programs. And look out for future events coming up soon to we're excited about. Here are some things that you've missed. So our fun days in the park wrapped up the our August the twelfth, it was the last Wednesday right before school started. We had water day, we had community fitness. Pirate and fairies were our last one. We had a great turnout at the Community Corner. Lots of smiling faces. And with all of us doing our social distancing, it was it's quite an event. We also had a community family mural that we partnered up with Eight Legs and Miss Kristen at the Art Box. That was a great event as well as cartooning for youth and women, self-defense and safety awareness. So we're trying to do more community-minded type events. Please join Miss Amy on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. Do a walk around town. So it's a great our walking club. So please join her and sign up on through rec desk. She meets up at the McDonald House at eight A M. Tuesdays and Thursdays. Again, we had a wonderful pop-up pottery wheel throwing with Miss Kristen at the Art Box. It was full again. We had a waiting list. Look for more programming just like this coming soon. But we again love our community partners. Coming up, we have Senior Coffee is going to start coming back in September. We have very limited space for this because we're doing all the protocols for COVID. And so please, if you're interested, go ahead and sign up now. We also have a teen program coming up at the end of September and another adult program coming up with painting a piece of your own furniture. So that's all kinds of learning environment, art environment, and some great social environment as well. Again, we love partnering up with our businesses here in Waxaw and all the artisans and our community leaders. So please contact us. We are getting ready for our October to December program guide. Because with COVID, we have to be a little more concise with our time period. So we're looking out for the next three months, and we'd love to have you a part of it. To give you a re-update on Play Responsibly. So if we are still under the governor's orders about social distancing and wearing our mask, definitely washing our hands. And if you don't feel well, it's it's just time to stay home for a little while. But we'd love to have you out in the park. It's a great way to center ourselves and have a good time with your family. What's open? All of our restrooms are open, our shelters, our athletic fields, our trails, our open spaces, the skate park, but we have limited capacity in the skate park. And it's at twenty-five, so we ask our citizens to please abide by that. The areas that are not open is our playground still until the executive order goes into phase three. And then we have limited on our rental capacity. So please call us or contact us for more information. As always, I'll leave you with our vision and mission. And I just wanted to say also citizen involvement is very important to the Park and Rec Department. We've had some vandalism within our park system the last couple of weeks. And we just ask everybody to keep their eyes and ears open. And if they see anything out of place, just give us a call. We'll do our best to to come and and help out, but we always want our facilities to be a safe environment for everyone. So it does take a community, and we appreciate you looking out for our park system, and we hope to see you outside.
Very good. I did understand that we did, I saw some pictures of a little bit of vandalism. It's unfortunate. And I understand that we might know somewhat of what happened there. So.
Yes, sir. So we we actually are very fortunate to have camera systems within our park system. So we were able to apprehend the young person. But this is one of those things that does take community, and our citizens are our best defense.
I agree, and and I applaud those who did step up and, you know, identify, you know, some of those. And so it does take a community. So I appreciate that a lot. Any questions for the Parks and Rec Director from any of the staff? Anybody around? Well, you did a great job again. Dana, thank you very much for always enlightening our parks situation. And I'm glad that everybody is still getting out. No fistfights or anything like that at the skate park on use because they're all waiting to get in there. I see there's a lot of activity over there. So I think that's really great that we're still able to provide, you know, some way for everybody to get out. So appreciate all your efforts in keeping that organized. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. All right, with that, any other comments by the boards commissioners? I see one hand up right now, Commissioner Simpson. I see Mayor Portem McMillan. So I'm going to give way to Commissioner Simpson first, and then we can drop to the mayor for town.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, again, congratulate Clerk Schuler for her swearing in for the president of the North Carolina Municipal Clerks Association. That is really a big deal. And to know that one of our town staff is going to be in that leadership role is really a great thing for the town. And I just want to congratulate her and thank her for making me a part of her special day.
That's wonderful. Mayor Portem?
Had to unmute myself. Just quickly, as those on the board do know that I work very closely with many families here in the community of Waxaw and also with food pantries and donating and working with other community persons who donate as well to the food pantry. Please take note and be mindful of those, especially seniors or young people or students who are now back in school during this period of COVID, who may not have the meals that they need to have because their parents may not be working or cannot afford that. And that there are still people in our community who are in need. One food pantry that I am working very closely with is at Waxaw Baptist Church, and that's the Jesse Jude Food Pantry. The people there, I've been working with them since the beginning of the year. I'm doing weekly donations and drop-offs to them to assist with many seniors and many people who are in need who come from as far as Pageland to come here to the food pantry to get some assistance during this time. So there are still people and families who need who need help. If it's your neighbor or someone next door or someone that you know, please reach out and in any way that you can find an opportunity to help them. And if you are willing to work with any of the food pantries, or if you would like to know more about the one that I'm working with or some of the others that I do work with in helping not just that food pantry, but people here in the community, you can reach out to me and maybe we can work together and be of assistance to our neighbors.
Very good, very admirable. Brenda, I applaud you for doing that as your third part-time job. And I know it's a lot of effort every time I do capture you. I hear the car in the background, so I know you're on the road, serving more and more of our communities. So thank you for taking that on and making your time available in addition to all your other duties and responsibilities that you have with the town and with your family and and everything else going on. So we applaud you for that. Thank you very much. All right, any other comments up on the board there? I am seeing none. I'd like to also thank our town attorney. I see he came off his mic there. So Charlie, floor is yours for the moment. Have at it.
Congratulations to all of you for a fantastic meeting tonight. The citizens were served.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you for your guidance all the time. A lot of questions. You know, some new paths and maybe some unfamiliar paths that some or all of us have gone down, probably some paths that they've never gone down. So appreciate your counseling guidance and then all of our phone calls about every five minutes. And so I know that we're keeping you busy right now. But thank you for your quick response and your accurate responses. It's been very helpful to this board. And the clerk and the town manager. Thank you. Commissioner Morey, I see your hand up.
I also wanted to congratulate Melody for her her achievement. It it does speak highly of someone when they are complimented in that fashion by their peers. I also wanted to thank everybody on staff, mayor, the commissioners. Many folks out there might not understand or believe that all these emails were read or that all these meetings were had to get to this decision. I understand there's a great amount of perhaps disappointment with some folks, but ultimately, everyone on this staff, everybody on this team put into the research, put into speaking to residents, put in a lot of effort to come to the decision that was made. I'll speak for myself when I say that, again, while it's it wasn't a popular decision, leadership often is just that, making unpopular decisions and taking a lot of things into consideration, making those decisions. So again, I want to thank the entire staff for all the hard work, the back and forth, the disagreements that I knew we would have. But moving forward, I think that, again, speaking for myself, we made a good decision for the future of Waxaw.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Morey. Appreciate the comments. And again, to reiterate, you know, all the time, effort and energy that the staff put forth in this over on that particular project. I guess if you can count back to two thousand and five, that's a long time. And so that's a lot of effort, a lot of change in both leadership and staff, and then picked it up again in two thousand and nineteen as a town manager and his role then as the planning director. It stated, you know, sometimes these things can get through in about five months. This one is working on what fourteen, fifteen months or better. So appreciate the due diligence, Jeff and your staff since you've been on board here, both in her role as planning director and now the town manager. It's a it's just a great collaborative effort, and it shows what you know, just what working together really feels like, good, bad, or indifferent. But this this staff and this this leadership team does have lots of conversation. As Commissioner Morey says, sometimes we we actually duke it out a little bit, that we can all get together back again as family and and go on and make other decisions on another day. So appreciate the entire town's effort. Thank you very much for that. And I see, Jeff, you're unmuted. Is there something that you wanted to say?
Other than I just want to say thank you to the board and thank you to the staff. And then, yes, I mean, these these processes take a while. And of course, right now, I'm still in that dual role of town manager and planning director. And every time I I look at myself on the screen here, I notice how I'm starting to get gray. And I, you know, that that's why. So but I I can tell you that that I enjoy every minute of it. When you're a local government employee, it really is for most people, it's a labor of love. You know, why else would you do it? Well, for me, it's because I love it. I really do. And it's it's what I've I've known all of my professional life. So, you know, I'm I'm in it twenty years now, and hopefully we'll continue to do it for as 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 long as allowed. So it's just a there's a lot of ups and downs every day, obviously, but it really is just a great and overall rewarding profession to be in. So thank you.
Great. And and we are just really happy to have you here contributing to our organization and and structure and rebuilding, you know, the town staff the way we need to. Jeff, it's for all of us, I can say it's been a very, very welcome addition, and we have all enjoyed working with you. You're diligent with us. You provide us with soundbites and information when we need it. I don't know how you find the time, but we appreciate it. So thank you very much. Okay. Don't see any other hands up there again. And so looking, we don't have. Don't see any other hands up there again, and so we're looking, we don't have anything on the closed session. So all you guys race up to make the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five? Roll call? I think we're good. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night, all.
Night.
Night.
Good night.